Check one two. Call to our April fourteenth, regular two thousand twenty-five meeting at six o'clock. Roll call please. Present?
Present.
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 Here. Present.
Thank you very much. Please join us for prayer and followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Father God, we just thank you for your presence here again this evening. We just welcome you to our meeting. We just thank you for the upcoming celebration of your resurrection and just thank you for being a great God. Lord, just anoint our meeting and just keep your hands on all we do and just lead us, Lord, and let us make Sellersburg all that it can be. Just thank you. In Jesus's name, amen.
United States of America, the Republic of which stands one nation under God, in the middle of whatever we judge us for all.
I need to amend the agenda. An agenda needs to be amended to add ordinance number two zero two five dash O R dash zero zero nine. It's an ordinance vacating the platted drain easement located on certain real property upon the petition of property owner. This order should be presented and discussed during our public portion of the night's meeting. Thank you. I got a motion by Matt. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Scott. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Same sign nay. Motion approved. Yes, sir. Okay. Okay. Thank you. Okay. All right. Approval of minutes submitted by the court treasurer also note upon our website.
So moved.
Got motion by Matt. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Randy. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Same sign nay. Motion approved. Approval of allowance claims also submitted by the court treasurer also note upon our website. Got motion by Scott. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Matt. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Same sign nay. Motion approved. Approval of payroll allowance docket submitted by the court treasurer also known upon our website. Got a motion by Scott. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Matt. Sorry. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Same sign nay. Motion approved. Take a minute to sign those. Got these new hearing days now. Everybody's heard about our voices a little bit differently. Okay. All right. Let's see. Comments from our public on our agenda items. We do have one request. Rhonda Potey, six twenty-eight Lincoln Boulevard. Agenda item is redevelopment authority. Ms. Potey?
Okay. My question is, what is the difference between the redevelopment commission and the redevelopment authority?
Okay. Sure. Sure.
Yes. So redevelopment authority is a creature of statute. It allows the redevelopment to be properly. So redevelopment authority also should bond its rights with the real property ownership. But redevelopment raising the creature of statute, it's going to reward the people on board, redevelopment authority. But they can issue bonds, they lease property to the redevelopment.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Bo. Okay. All right. So we're going to close our regular meeting. Have our public hearing on our petition of a vacant. So I ask for a motion to close our regular meeting.
So moved.
Motion by Scott. Second by Matt. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Same sign nay. Motion approved. All right. So we're open to the public. Jake at six oh eight. Please state your name and address, please.
Gentlemen, good evening. My name's Sean Graham with Insight Real Estate. We are a developer out of Oakbrook, Illinois. We recently developed the Starbucks on Camp Run Parkway next to the Wendy's. The general just behind this request is we are looking to vacate an existing public drainage easement that is no longer in use. During the course of our development, we did some significant improvements to a regional detention basin that previously was served by an undersized outlet pipe. We worked with our site seller and some neighbors around our property to upsize that pipe, do some additional grading near the basin, and then we granted a new private drainage easement that more distinctly lays out the rights of what's allowed in that area, who's responsible for maintenance, what the percentage of those costs would be. So basically, we're looking to clean up our title commitment, vacate this existing easement, which again, there are no utilities running within that easement area because we relocated them out of that area.
Okay. All right. First of all, y'all did an excellent job of fixing all that up. I went down there one Sunday and tried to clear all that out.
Thank you.
Y'all probably would've saved, I probably would've saved you some time, I guess, but you did a really nice job. So I really greatly appreciate that. So Jake, do you want to have something? Does anybody else have anything?
This was, this, all this was platted back mid-two thousands, early twenty-ten, twelve, I think, not knowing what was going to go there. Then after the property sold and the site development, first the Wendy's and now the Starbucks coming in, like I said, they went through, had to do quite, they had to do quite a bit of drainage improvements on that basin because the previous owner did not complete them prior to selling. So again, cleaning up some of that stuff. And when they put the new pipe in, like you said, basically, they just relocated the pipe to where it actually is and the easement was established. But when the previous pipes, I think, were installed, they didn't put them in the easement. They put them on private property. So instead of doing it all, they're just shipping the easement over, which has already been established. Now there's a useless easement sitting there on the property.
Okay.
Charlie, so I understand correctly, this is private property, correct? We're talking about private property?
It's in.
Outside of the easement?
Yes. So they, there was a, there was an easement on their pro, private property.
Right.
They are, they have established another easement that has pipes in it. This easement was established upon its creation, but was never used. So now they're just trying to get rid of it.
But they made significant improvements to the property.
Oh, yes, sir.
And we didn't pay any money for that?
No, it's private.
Then they're going to just give us the, they're going to vacate that easement after all this was completed? I understand. It's also a benefit to the town. Because I hear a lot about how the town does things and how the town doesn't do things. And in this case, we have a private property owner that's in business, takes a plot of land, that makes improvements to that on their own dime. Obviously, they're in business and makes the property better, which I'm sure, does it affect any of the surrounding flats as far as the drainage and the, well, nothing, it's just their property only?
No. The pipe that comes out, there's a regional basin back behind there that services multiple properties. And basically, the pipe that they're talking about, it's the discharge pipe for that.
Well, I appreciate you doing that and not coming into town and trying to soak us for twenty-five, fifty thousand dollars. And thank you. So.
Our pleasure.
I wanted to make sure that was, that was, I was accurate in what I was hearing.
Yeah. So win-win all around. We're excited to get open in the next, I think, month or two here. So I appreciate all your help as well.
Thank you.
Charlie and Mr. El.
Does anybody here from the public have any thoughts concerned?
You said Oakbrook, Illinois?
Yes.
Sean, I have a question. Do you represent, who is it?
It's Insight Real Estate.
Okay.
So we're the owner and developer.
Just wanted to make sure. All right. Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. All right. Since we have nothing else. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
And so with that, I ask for a motion to clo, do I want to go on ahead and read this ordinance? Yeah. Okay. Yeah. I just want to make sure I wasn't, yeah. So I asked for motion to close.
So moved.
Got motion by Scott. Second by Matt. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Same sign nay. Motion approved. All right. Motion to open up our regular council meeting.
So moved.
Got motion by Scott.
Second.
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 Matt. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Was it six thirteen? I'm sorry. Okay. So now I can go over this, right, Jake? Okay. All right. So then I would like to ask for the first reading of the ordinance number two zero two five dash O R dash zero zero nine, an ordinance vacating the platted drainage easement located on certain real property upon the petition of property owner. It just states in here as where Insight Real Estate LLC owns certain real property located at eighty-eleven County Road three eleven, Sellersburg, Indiana, which is, which has a platted public drainage easement on it. Whereas owner has petitioned his council to vacate said easement on the property. And whereas the court treasurer has probably advertised a public hearing to be held on the fourteenth of April twenty twenty-five at six P M., Town Hall for which the public was invited to further send certified letters, the surrounding property owners notifying them of the same. Now therefore, it be ordained by this town council, Sellersburg, Indiana, the following of public. Hearing was held on this matter on the fourteenth day of April two thousand twenty-five at six P M., for which the public was invited to attend and speak at. This council, after carefully consideration, has determined that the request to vacate the easement is hereby granted. This order shall be in full force and effect upon its passage and propagation of it evident by affirmative signatures as the undersigned majority of duly elected serving members of this council. So with that, I ask for a motion.
So moved.
For approval. I got a motion by Matt. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Randy. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Same sign nay. I can go on. Just a motion to waive the second reading of ordinance two zero two five dash O R dash zero zero nine.
So moved.
Got a motion by Matt. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. No? Second. Second by Scott. Any comments? Okay. All right. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Same sign nay. Motion approved. All right. Motion to approve ordinance number two zero two five dash O R dash zero zero nine, an ordinance vacating the platted drain easement located on certain real property upon petition of the property owner.
So moved.
Got a motion by Matt. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Scott. Any final discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Same sign nay. Motion approved. Thank you. Okay. Our next ordinance says ordinance number two zero two five dash O R dash zero zero seven, an ordinance creating the Sellersburg Redevelopment Authority. This is our second reading of, of this. So I don't know if anyone is here to discuss likes or dislikes of it, but if not, I'll ask for the motion for the approval of ordinance number two zero two five dash O R dash zero zero seven, an ordinance creating the Sellersburg Redevelopment Authority.
So moved.
Got a motion by Terry. Second by Matt. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Same sign nay. Motion approved. Thank you. Yes. Oh, oh, mercy. I'm sorry. Okay. We're going to go back and thank you very much, Michelle. Our, we did have an item before this and we'll go back to it now. The twenty twenty-five dash one community crossing matching grant bid award. So I'm going to assume J T L will have someone take care of this or, or we got, you're to take care of it. Doing all right?
I think so.
Good.
Um, so the C C M G twenty twenty-five dash one street paving bids were opened on April third, twenty twenty-five. We had three bidders. MAC construction was low, ninety-eight thousand three hundred and eighty-one dollars and zero cents. That's within the awarded amount from, from indot. So it's our recommendation to approve the bid.
Okay. All right. Does anyone have any questions for our?
Yeah. What were the emails?
Uh, libs was second. libs paving. It was a hundred and nine thousand seven hundred and fifteen dollars and zero cents. And the third bidder was Temple and Temple. It was one hundred and eighteen thousand four hundred and thirty-five thousand, four hundred and thirty-five dollars and zero cents. Ninety-eight thousand three hundred and eighty-one dollars and zero cents.
Excuse me. What's your name, sir?
Aaron Sutherland. Which probably turns in lands.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay. With that said, and Aaron, thank you very much. I ask for a motion for approval of MAC construction in the amount of ninety-eight thousand three hundred and eighty-one dollars for our twenty twenty-five dash one community crossing matching grant bid award.
So moved.
And a motion by Matt. Second.
Second.
Second by Scott. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Same sign nay. Motion approved. All right. All right. We'll go back to our second ordinance resolution. It's resolution two zero two five dash R dash zero zero one, a resolution declaring the official intent of the town council of the town of Sellersburg to reimburse expenditures for a sewer project. Charlie, Jake, what do y'all want to? Okay.
Hold up. Yeah, we didn't finish that one.
Uh, yeah, but we, it was the second reading. That was the second reading.
Yeah.
We didn't know. Okay. Well, yeah, but we read the first one in the last meet, meeting. So you want me to read it twice again? Okay. Okay. Sure. All right. Yeah. That's fine. Sure. Okay. All right. Sitting here asking for a waiver of a reading of twenty twenty-five, just a motion? Motion to approve? Got a motion. Matt, I second by Scott. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Same sign nay. Motion approved. Thank you. Sorry about that. I just figured since it was just my second reading, we didn't need to worry about. Okay. This is Bo Zeller is going to explain to us a little bit here about our resolution of our declaration of official intent with the town council, reimbursement expenditure sewer project.
Yeah. Bo Zeller with Frost Brown Todd. The, the resolution in front of you, it allows you, if you did pursue a sewage project and you did issue bonds, it allows you to spend money on that project now and reimburse yourself out of bond proceeds. It's required under the Internal Revenue Code to keep the bonds tax exempt. So we went ahead and did this as a precautionary measure. In the event that you wanted to issue bonds and pursue this project, you would be able to reimburse yourself for the cash on hand that you used for this project if it went forward. So that's the purpose of it. There's a lot of fancy language in there from the treasury regulations, but that's, that's functionally what it does.
And of course, this is for the U S thirty-one project, correct?
No.
Town center. Gotcha.
Good. You know, it states here, whereas the council of the town of Sellersburg, Indiana, is a physical and legislative body of the town, whereas the town reasonably expects the town or its instrumentally of the town to obtain financially an amount not to exceed eleven million dollars for purposes of pain or reimbursing costs in connection with design, construction, and/or installation of certain upgrades to the town sewage works. Whereas the town has made and will continue to make additional expenditures for the project from the current funds available to the town prior to obtaining financial. And whereas to the town council of the town, previously adopted an ordinance establishing the Sellersburg Redevelopment Authority pursuant to provisions of I C thirty-six dash seven dash one four point five. And whereas the authority is an instrumentally of the town, and whereas the town reasonably expects to reimburse expenditures with proceeds of the obligation to be issued by the town authority or any other instrumental of the town. And whereas the town intends that this declaration of official intent reimburses expenditures constitutes and declared, declaration of official intent pursuant to treasure regular one point one five dash two. Now therefore, it be ordained by this town councils, town of Sellersburg, Indiana, following section one, the town declares its official intent pursuant to tre, treasure regulations, one point one five zero dash two, to add the authority issues obligation on behalf of the town to finance all or a portion of the project to be reimbursed or expenditures related to the project with proceeds of debt to be secured by the authority and to issue debt not exceeding eleven million dollars in the aggregate principal amount for the purposes set forth herein for the reimbursing costs of financing the project included expenditures. These reimbursed expenditures will be either of type of property chargeable to the capital account under general federal income tax principles, or be a cost of insurance, assurance with respect to the obligations to be entered into section three upon issuance of the obligations by the town authority or another instrumentality of the town, the proper officials of the council and the town are hereby authorized to take all actions necessary to reimburse expenditures to the proper fund or proper priorities. Resolution shall be effective immediately upon this adoption and approval. So Bo stated, you know, this is something that is just a protectable thing.
Yeah. It, it's precautionary. It does not obligate you to undertake the project or issue the bonds. This is just if you did, you can reimburse yourself if you spent money on it upfront.
Okay. All right. Anybody have any questions or?
Charlie, in layman's terms, can you explain, we talk about eleven million dollars. We talk about a lot of codes and ordinances and people don't understand. Can you just give us in layman's terms what this means? Give it to me in layman's terms where the average citizen can understand what the town is liable for, what the town is doing, what the town's options are. Same thing you said. We're not, we're not beholden to this because what happens is when we leave here, there's all these wild stories out there. Now I can't even answer those stories anymore because they blocked me from their groups. Okay?
Yeah.
So before we get, everyone's up on edge about the school referendum. I understand that. This is town business.
Yep.
So can you explain in layman's terms before these stories grow heads and we're building high rises on Camp Run Parkway?
So you would like me to explain what the structure of the bonds would look like?
Resolutions, fancy code, just, just normal, average guys.
Yeah. So yes, if, if you decided to undertake this project and pay for it, you would issue bonds. They would be redevelopment authority of bonds. So you've created a redevelopment authority. The redevelopment authority has no taxing power itself. It's a statutory creature to allow you to issue bonds. The redevelopment commission, these, this project and these bonds would pay the debt service on the bond. So it would be secured by TIF. TIF dollars.
When we say statutory creature, we mean statutory reservation.
Yes. It's, it's, the general assembly has provided statutes that allow you to create a redevelopment authority so they can issue bonds.
Which is required.
Correct. For this type of structure. And again, it would be secured by tax increment finance revenues. So it would not raise anyone's taxes. The redevelopment authority can't tax anybody. It would simply be funds that the town already receives would pay the debt service. Yes. Mm-hmm.
Good. All right.
Finance, tax increment finance. Yeah. Magic. Do, do you want to?
It's his first check in January and he's checking.
That's right. County. That's right. It's easiest. Yeah.
It's through property taxes. So there's a base established, whatever the tax base is, the rate of assessment when the TIF is established, those continue to generate the property taxes, and any increment over top of that is captured. So it's not one hundred percent of property tax from that size goes in the TIF. It's the incremental increase over top after it has been developed or redeveloped.
Everybody.
Come down to Jeff. Come down to Jeffersonville. Come down with the day for me.
And Randy, they expire. Our, our TIF is, you didn't put it on for a day.
Yeah. That's right.
And you can only use those monies for certain things.
True.
It's not a free check. You have to reinvest. You can do certain things with that money and that's it.
So I guess my last question, I guess, we don't, we don't really know what's coming together. Do we have an idea what is?
We have, yeah, we have a forecast that Nick Lawrence puts together. So there's a forecast on what, based on assessment, assessed value within the TIF on what those are going to look like. So we know what the revenues are going to be prior to.
When we get this eleven million dollar figure for the coverage and sewer budget, that is so unclear. That will come from TIF funds.
Correct.
Not from the sewer funds. It was TIF fund only.
Correct.
Okay.
And it's, if I can add this, it's like, you don't want to put the car before overs, I guess. So if you put in sewer infrastructure, then they, businesses that do, these stores, whatever, then they start capturing it.
Right.
So it will continue to grow the amount.
I was just, I wasn't clear. You know, it seems like when you are building sewers or building infrastructure like that, did it come from the rate payers and the sewer and water fund? I didn't know it was solely, I guess my question was, I didn't know if it was solely from the TIF fund. And that, that was my question.
Can you go, John? Okay. Everybody else good?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. So with that, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Same sign nay. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mr. Dill.
Okay. We have no one finished business. We don't have no new business tonight. Wow. Okay. Very interesting. Okay. We have a couple of general comments from our public. First one is Von Andrews, three oh one West Judica Street, Sellersburg, Indiana.
Hey, Carrie. I'm good. I'm short. I need to state my name.
Please.
Von Andrews, three oh four West Judica, Sellersburg. I just had some questions about the Oak Elementary School. On April the second, we had a pretty substantial storm come through and we had a bunch of people on social media asking if the town had a storm shelter. So I know. So I know Mr. McBoy has said that there's been no concrete plans made for the building other than the, just keep the facade. So I was wanting to make a suggestion that we could look into making a storm shelter slash community center for the town. Um, I did a little bit of checking into and it said that a redevelopment board could apply for block grants for funding to renovate an existing building. So I don't know about that stuff, but that was my suggestion. That's it.
Okay, alright.
Andrews.
Andrews. I'll make sure I say it properly. Having a storm shelter in its current state now would not be a very good idea for obvious reasons. But looking at the future, I've worked with Gavin from Clark, E M A. For a very long time, he's a very bright individual. Um, and I think we seem to have this issue not just in Sellersburg, but Clark County as a whole as to where do people go that don't have adequate safe space. Uh, now, this event was, in most cases, with the exception of tornadoes, most of it is announced, you have time to prepare. Not to be, as I was called condescending, um, but when you have time to prepare, you need to do just that. You need to heed the warnings of the government and police and all these places that are telling you, hey, you need to do these things. And then what happens? We get down to the final minute, uh, chief, and all of a sudden we have ten people that, wow, what am I supposed to do? There's always outliers like elderly, physically handicapped, people that don't have anywhere to go. So I'm work, trying to work with Gavin to establish around the county places that they can go in enough time. The last thing that you want in the event of a tornado is to have people on the roadways trying to get to a shelter and then they become victims of the tornado itself potentially.
Right.
It's a very, very good question. I think Sellersburg needs a place or two like that. It used to be churches and other places open their doors. The problem is, like I said, is no one's there to open the doors anymore.
Yeah, Speed, Speed Church did open up after they reached out.
I saw that and then who's going to watch the people that are there? And because, you know, I mean, some people may volunteer, but they can't stay there all night. And then if something happens, a medical issue or whatever, if they're there all night, the police are out doing their business and fires, there's no one there to watch them. When I say them, the people that are seeking shelters. So that was another issue is, is how do you staff it in the event that something does happen? If you have an elderly person that need medication or whatever. Uh, so we're working to try to establish something like that. But again, it's, 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 goes back to what I said of, hey, check on your neighbors, check on your, let's be good human beings. It's really not that hard, I mean, you understand that.
Oh, I do.
But, and we do have to have a place where people who don't have physical facilities, they can go to. I do believe that, so hopefully Gavin and I can, and with some other people, because, you know, there's nowhere to go in New Wash, you know, or out in some of the rural areas that don't have a basement or a sturdy structure, you just go to the middle of your house and you hope, you you hope you get lucky. Well, it shouldn't be that.
Right.
So, so hopefully that answers your question.
Yeah.
That, I I don't know if it's that specific place. Right now in its current state, that would be a huge liability in the event that something were to happen there and then we have a hundred people and some, the building collapses or something. I don't think it's, that would be the safest path, but maybe.
Is it something maybe that can be considered in the future though for the town?
I don't, I don't think the town has made any, any forecast of what that, the intended use for that building is going to be. Other than we, other than we took possession of it to save it. Took possession and redevelopment commission has kicked around some options. Like I said, I think the goal of obtaining it, the school corporation basically said, we're going to sell it. And the town said, no, because if it was sold, then potentially it'd be bulldozed. And the whole idea was.
Can I ask about that too?
The whole idea was, we want to make sure that the structure stays because we don't have, basically we don't have any historic structures left in Sellersburg.
Correct.
So the town wanted to get possession of it, so if anything, it could be preserved in some way, shape or form. I don't think the intent was for the town to hold on to it forever.
Yeah, I figured that's not the case, I mean. Right. Right. Mm-hmm.
But whatever goes in there, we will retain the facade of the building.
Okay, uh, I did want to ask because I was looking on, and I'm, I'm not an expert on any of this, but I was looking when school properties are sold or trade or whatever disposed of, that they're supposed to offer it to, um, charter schools before they disperse that property? Was that something that was done? Do you know?
I don't know, like I said, we've worked out an interlocal agreement and transfer with them between two governmental agencies. So I don't know if that was, I don't know if that's a route they went down or not before, before we got into it.
Okay. Right, I was just wonder, worried because if that wasn't done, I was afraid the charter school could come after the building and then the town's already got it, so that was my question. Yeah.
They would have sold it to the highest bidder, and that highest bidder probably would have turned it into something that the highest bidder was going to make money off of. It may not have been desirable for that street, uh, or that area. So now we do have more control over the building than we'll be able to.
Yeah.
And the desire is to keep it, uh, in its current state. Needs some updating, obviously, infrastructure.
Uh, you can drive by and tell that.
Brown, Brown came in and looked at the building and they gave us a. I cannot think of his name.
He thought it was good that it was still had occupants that were used in the places. He said it sets the door.
The Growing Minds has the building through the end of twenty twenty six, June twenty six. May thirty first, twenty six is the release. This was talked about early, earlier or later, mid-year last year, plenty of time. Will, will help anybody find if we want to see growing minds here. I mean, some, some cities or counties have said, yeah, we're not going to be landlords, that's a liability, get out.
Right.
So we've worked with everybody to, I mean, two and a half years is a long time to make claims. Unless you don't know you're going to have babies or kids by that time. Yeah, if you do have a kid, you have two and a half years. And we would more than, well, Charlie would be more willing to help find other places to keep those folks here. And most of those kids, I would assume, go, would go through a rock creek or a silver creek as far as continuing their education.
Yeah.
So it's obvious we, we would want to keep that, that here, but you can't be in that building forever.
Yeah.
So, but I think, you know, some of the stories and things that I see out there are just, actually just not true.
Yeah, I mean, that's why I asked you to chime in. Because I said I heard it was going to be a town hall.
They're more than welcome to call me.
Yeah.
Now I can't communicate with the masses anymore.
I didn't take you off, that's not my page. I kind of like the banner.
You, you, you can call me anytime you want.
I don't mind it.
But at the, at the end of the day, like I said, when we had it looked at by our engineers term, uh, you know, they gave us a, pretty much a, a great layout of the investment was going to be, had to be make into it. It was somewhere around eight and a half million dollars. Uh, right now the roof alone is a little over seven hundred. And, uh, you know, and, and a building for three stories now needs an elevator. Uh, so, so you're, you're looking at a lot of things that has to be, uh, would have to be done as far as from us. And like I said, I don't think we want to be landlords.
Okay, so I, I had heard that, but I.
We would have had to make it eighty eight and be back away.
Yeah, it's understandable.
So just, just while you guys are commenting on that, I'd just like for her to understand and the public to understand that, uh, we virtually spent little to no money acquiring the school. We actually did a, a property swap that, where they can actually expand their property. I don't know if you're familiar with that or not.
Well, I saw where, yeah, I saw the documents.
We got some, uh, I would say residual money from drawing up contracts and, uh, I think we've been landlords for a couple of months and, uh, I don't think we're getting rich at this point.
Well, I was gonna, yeah, I was gonna say, it looks to me like it's going to be a, an expense.
Yeah, and, uh, you know, a town hall was the idea, it was a great idea, you know, I, I, I thought it was wonderful, but the, the price tag, when trying to present it to some of the people in district two, uh, that's where I'm at.
That's where I'm at.
They loved, they loved the idea, but nobody wants to deal with that price tag.
Right.
So, you know, that's kind of how we got hung up. So if we get it into possibly, as Charlie might have explained, if we turn it over to redevelopment and they find someone that wants to develop it into something other than what it is, whether it's apartments or whether it's, uh, that's a bad word to say in, in Sellersburg, but let's say it's assisted living or senior living or office buildings, uh, you know, that, uh, we can kind of control how that goes, you know, a little bit.
Yeah.
You know, right now, but, uh, it was one of those deals, I think that it was, I was a no vote early on, but after I seen, you know, taking control of it, we could kind of see where it goes as far as what happens to it from this point forward, you know. So we caught a lot of flak and we tore the bank down, you know.
You know, I have to be honest, I didn't know that that was pretty underneath all that ugly until you all ripped it off and I was like, oh my gosh, that is really cool.
Yeah.
But I like historical stuff.
Well, we still have all episodes sent down to sewer plants, we saved everybody to be used.
Plans for that?
The facility assessment stuff that they're talking about, the bill on the website under the documents library. If you want to go through it.
And the, our, the goal is, our thought process is that once it, once that school building goes back into private hands, it'll go back to the tax roll and that's where we're going to.
Okay. Alright, so that, that makes sense, okay. That's pretty much all I had.
Okay, hey, thank you very much. Okay, uh, our next is, uh, Rhonda Potey, uh, six twenty eight Lincoln Boulevard. Uh, her general comment was, uh, concerned about she brought to us, uh, a month or so ago, uh, six weeks, we'll say, about seafood truck update.
Yes, I was here last month and discussing the problems we were having with the seafood truck on the Southern Realty lot, just following up to see if there was any more conversation that you all were able to get anywhere with that. Yeah, because that would help because actually last week there was a barbecue truck set up there and they were over there on the nine one one side where the building was and everything worked out fine. So. They were on generator. Alright, and I don't think it would hurt his business any if he moved on that side. I mean, I think it's a good, good thing we're working together on that, I appreciate that. Yeah, y'all got my picture of the, uh, truck blocking the road and the sidewalk? Man, just for, just for a fish sandwich. Yeah, not anymore. He was fast, you must have been right around the corner somewhere hiding. Yeah, um, a couple of other things I'd like to ask about the sidewalk repair. Do we have anything in the talks about sidewalk repair in the town? Uh, New Albany Street up here by American Legion, there are several sections where sidewalk is actually sticking up in the air.
Yeah, so we are working through that right now, some of that's related to Duke and them replacing power poles and they need to come fix them, um, so they're working with their contractor to come and replace those.
And, um, I did want to say, I thought the newsletter that went out in the mail was great. Appreciate that, I think, and I hope they continue because that's good information for everybody to have. And another thing is, when I first started watching the council meetings on the, uh, YouTube, the first time I saw Councilman McBoy's question and answer, I thought, ooh, I felt bad for you guys. Because it seemed to me like it was more an interrogation than informational. But as I started watching them, I realized what it was and it was an informational session. So I was wondering if the council would be open to having a community question and answer in the town hall? Let the community come in and ask questions, just general questions and give it answers.
Charlie, last year or the year before last? You, 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 like.
At the park.
We would meet in the park and he and I, or he and Randy, or he and the chief, we would sit up there and we were solely there to answer questions. We posted it, we told everyone we were there. We had one or two people maybe show up at most. We made ourselves available, we, we took an evening, we sat up there, it's private. If you weren't on YouTube, you could come in and ask anything. And no one, two people.
Two people showed up.
I agree with you and I, I'm not very well liked up here. I wear like a badge of honor.
Yeah.
Because people need to understand, and again, average persons terms that aren't into government finance, that don't understand ordinances and resolutions or how meetings are run or Robert's rules. Most people, they just give, just give me the, the basic and they want to move on with their lives, whether they agree or disagree, okay? I love when people come in here and ask questions. At the end of the day, I'm not going to walk out here and dislike you any less. I would hope that you don't think anything less of me. But I ask these questions amongst, because these are department heads. Chief Adams, uh, Resident Nektie, uh, Charlie. I do this part-time in my district, I'm solely responsible for the, first and foremost, for District One, which I always refer to as God's country. They don't like that, but that's, that's my responsibility of that area and then the rest of the town. So I think, in my opinion, that what they tried last year was, was a good idea, but not a lot of people from my district are driving down here to, to the middle. They've got ball, they've got after school events, they got dance, theater, like, how about we take it to, similar to, uh, what Mayor Moore does in Jeffersonville? How about we take it to each neighborhood? Hey, the town's going to be here, we're not going to be here, you know, every single week, but maybe once a quarter or once every couple of weeks, we go to Brad's district and he can be there with the chief or the assistant chief and whoever from the town, wastewater, drain. And there's your opportunity, like, hey, it's right down the street from me, let me pop in there and ask a couple of questions. Maybe that would be more effective versus asking people to come all the way down here. Because I'm just going to be honest with you, not a lot of my people might, they're just too busy. And then it's six o'clock at night during the summer.
Right.
I applaud you all. Most folks are not coming down to, to waste their evening after a long, hard day of work.
I got a long way to come too.
Yeah, see, and it's, it's tough and I respect it, that's now, that's why we have YouTube.
Right.
The problem is, is that we get on YouTube and we don't understand because we're not having personal, interpersonal communication. And then all of a sudden people take things the wrong way and now there's misinformation that you're mad at me because you don't like what I said at the council meeting. That we got tone and inflection and all that other stuff, that's really just not the case.
Right.
But we, I will add that we do intend to, or actually we had one page or ways that you said.
Maybe, maybe that's what we should try, maybe, maybe we, like IU goes on the road show every year with the basketball team. Maybe we just need to go on the road show of the town. What do you think about it, Randy? I'll let you come over to District One.
Well, is, are we still locked in with the rule when we do that, where we're going to have two, two guys?
See, we, we can't violate any open, Indiana Open Doors Act laws either because I don't want to get censured.
And with the newsletter, if that continues, that would be a good opportunity to let people know that this is going to happen.
Is that the third newsletter we've done? Uh, second or third, I can't remember.
Very well.
Yes, it was, it was good.
Um, and there's a thing on your all's webpage, portion of the website about inviting council meetings, that you all individually to attend meetings, which is how the HOA stuff got started. So I mean, I probably attend seven to ten HOA meetings a year, uh, different parts of town, about every district.
That may be a better idea for each community to get together and invite you guys. Right.
Amongst us, we can only do two of us.
Right, okay.
I got, I got a quick question. I go back to the, the food truck.
Okay.
The food truck that's up there. I personally think where it's at, I guess it's, they're there for visibility to get business, I understand that of thirty-one. I've been there, uh, where it's at and several times I feel, I feel like it's a safety issue trying to drive cars in there, backing out. Sometimes when you, you do pull in the wrong place and they pull in the vendor parking there and then you try to back out, you can't get in the road. And what I was wondering, I brought this up and I guess it's against our statute, but you said he's running electrical wire, is it, is it a two twenty or is it a one?
We cannot, we cannot let anybody use an electric wire, there's no way for us to.
I understand that, I understand that, but what if we have, I go, I go past Wilkerson Park and I go past the parking lot. I'm just throwing this out there, it's empty all the time. If they had their own generator, why could we not? First, the first number one reason, it's safety, it would be safer in that parking lot or at Wilkerson Park than where it's at now.
In our, in our new licensing stuff, they cannot use the parking lot, but they can use it off the street. Because there is posted parking on the street that they could sit on the street and you all be facing towards the sidewalk. And that would allow potential customers or whoever to park at one of the public parking locations and walk in.
You know, I just.
That is, that is an option.
Okay, I'm just, I'm just saying, now, New Albany, you're, you're talking about, you know, this right out here, but not in the park, we can't do that, we can't get it. And we own this parking across from the old bank, which when I come through there, I live in this part of town, there's never anybody there. I mean, you know, it's very seldom is anybody parked there. And visibility wise, if you know that the, the locals know that the dock is here on Thursday, I believe that's the day. You know, if I want to go there and, um, you know, if it wasn't there and I knew it was in the park right there, you know, you go around the corner. I just think from a safety issue, we have this property and say, well, we can't do it via statute. Well, I mean, it's up to us to change that, could, could we do that? Why could we not make it smarter, do it smarter? That's just my assessment, but I think where it's at, it's a, it's a really bad place. And like you said, if you move it to the other side, you know, I, I don't know, how do you go about that? But I'm thinking, you know, if we're kind of making the rules here, we made the rules to start with, why can't we make the rules to put it in a safer place? That just, that's just my, my assessment, because let's just say it was in the parking lot, you got the food truck and then you got parking for twelve, I don't know how many spots are there, what, twenty-four? Is it thirty? Right across from the bank, the parking that we repaved, the parking lot and everything.
Fifteen.
Okay, fifteen, so.
Fifteen and they're used by the businesses here.
There's still roomier parking and safer parking than off thirty-one or trying to back in, back out into Utica, but that's just my assessment. You know, I, I, I look at it that way, I'm like, why don't we utilize what we have and if we can? Because that's, that's going to be an accident waiting to happen up there.
I think the situation here is that gentleman paid to have the electric installed on the side of that building and water on that side of the building and they have some type of arrangement between the property owner and the food truck, because he paid for those outlets on the building.
But is, as she came here, her purpose for being here, it infringes on her business parking and, and my right in that segment, okay?
Well, and there again, that's where the conversation with the owner, by relocating the electric on the building to the other side, to get them away from their parking locations is the, is what we're trying to work through.
Hey, if it, if it works better for her to have it on the other side and it, it works better for the, the guy that's conducting the business, I'm all for it. But I'm just saying, we have, we don't have other options because I guess we, for lack of a better word, we have laws against it. But, you know, it's kind of up to us as a council. And then, but that opens up another door, then the other vendors will want to use it as well, so.
Which is why we've, we haven't written that, again, we haven't written it such a way that you can't come onto town property with the food, with the mobile food truck to set up on there, because we also have the pool that has its own vending. So we wrote it, we wrote it in such a way that you can be invited to town events or on town property at the behest of the town to participate, or in this case, New Albany Street, again, I use New Albany as an example, because you've got parking along the sidewalk over there on the stretch. There's nothing to say that five food trucks couldn't get together and say, hey, we're going to park out in New Albany starting on Wednesdays for five hours or whatever and they park along New Albany Street, it's public parking, they can't hook into our utility. That's in the ordinance as well.
They have to have their own.
They have to have their own, but they, Mayor Moore will come over and sit at any time as long as they're permitted in the town.
That's all I have, I'm going to sit down now.
Alright, thank you very much, thank you Rhonda.
So it just sounds to me like a thing of, food trucks are profitable.
I'll repeat that, food trucks are profitable, most places would get away from brick and mortar, if they had a fleet of food trucks, they'll make more money, I promise you that. Go into restaurant business and ask them. No one's trying to hurt anybody, I don't want to hurt Ms. Potte and her, uh, series of shops that she has here, they've been here for a long time. I, I, I just think we need to put our heads, we, we cannot allow, in my opinion, an agreement between an operator and a private property to supersede public safety, in my opinion. So I, I don't know what the solution is, but there has to be one and surely amongst all these bright minds in this room, we could find one that you don't have to be, what are they going to do during the, the height of the construction?
Well, that's the other thing, some of this is going to be self-solved issue.
So, but again, let, let's make it a long-term issue so we don't have to revisit it. Once we go through the root canal of fixing this road, uh.
We don't, we don't, we don't have nothing.
Well, the town people will have to go through the root canal fixing this road, um, and it's, it's going to be painful for some, it is, it is what it is. So that way, they don't have to go, we can fix the stuff and then they don't have to go through anymore, they're happy, you know? What you said with the, the school building, there are some really cool ideas out there for redevelopment as far as turning a building into something in the neighborhood that's attractive, that fits the neighborhood, that's not apartments, like if you go down to Bolton Tie in Clarksville. It's a really cool place, it's modern, it, it fits where it's at, but it has hair salons, it has tattoo shops, it has apartments, it has community office space. It's like a, I don't even know what they call it, but it's really cool, maybe we can get an old-time version, no offense Randy, of something like that in that building that fits the neighborhood, it doesn't need to be like, you know, rehab places, like we have residents that live there. We just have to have enough foresight to figure out what we want to do as a group and that requires input from the community. If you leave it up to us, then, then you just get what you get at that point. But is there a continual traffic problem still there now?
Alright, Charlie, can we put a timeline, you, you say the gentleman is looking at moving the electricity, can, can we potentially put a timeline on that for him?
I do whatever you want within the ordinance, like I said, I'm trying to, you know, work, trying to work with the new, just so.
Yeah.
Talk to the new property owner, I talked to the food truck owner.
Do you want me to go up and talk to him?
Like, then about basically, look, this is a problem, there's an issue, it needs to be solved.
Mm-hmm.
Here's where it is, you need to have your permit, he's got his permit, he worked with us on developing the permit, he's the one actually brought it to us, he said, man, you really need to have a permit. We got the permit together, here's the issue, here's the problem, here's the photos, here's a comment from the public in the neighborhood that we're having issues with, because your people are basically both guarding their parking over here.
Right.
And you need to move around the other side of the building, get you a cord, well, man, you can't run it. I guess running a, that type of electric cord that long and extension cord is not advisable. Cause I was like, that's, that's my comment, so look, man, go get an extension cord.
What are we doing?
So again, just trying to work through with them on some common sick pragmatic, how do we do this, man, you need to, here's the deal, you can't sit, you can't, you can't sit there anymore. You need to figure out how to, he said, well, let me, let me look into how I can get this stuff moved around, it's like touch base will be this way, that's where we're at.
Alright, Debbie, I'm sorry, alright, so. Rhonda. How about, how about we, uh, have a executive meeting, our next meeting? Y'all, if y'all want to discuss some different opportunities and see what legal and everything else is, so we'll just have an executive session, our next, next meeting, be fine?
Sure.
Okay, we can discuss, uh, well, let's see, it's going to be a bad week, not going to be a bad one, possibly. No, we can still do that, it's fine, it's Thursday, it's, uh, every week, so, but, uh, that's on a Monday, so, uh, we're good, it's closed, so, yeah, we'll say on the twenty-eighth, we'll have a five o'clock executive session. To discuss and everybody for the next two weeks start thinking of some ideas, I've got five in my mind right now, but may not be legal to do, so.
Uh, I'll be out of town Sunday, Monday and Tuesday that week, but, uh, I can call in if you want me to.
Okay, alright, perfect, alright, good, thank you.
Say you want a workshop?
Yeah, we'll have a workshop.
Do you charge a workshop?
Yep.
Twenty-eighth.
Twenty-eighth, five o'clock. Okay, good, alright, Charlie, you, uh, have the staff report?
Uh, the CCMG projects have kicked off, they're currently over in the Millview neighborhood, working on Millview Street, Millview Drive and Bud Off. Um, Circle Drive was in the CCMG, um, package that you all approved tonight. If you recall, a couple of streets got kicked out of, or the application last year due to some technical stuff within the NDOT road inventory, how they had some streets loaded in there and the street names weren't proper, so we got those cleaned up, went back to rebid and, um, we have Circle Drive, Celeste, I believe, and Banner or Emerald, one of those. Um, and then another alley down here that we added into that off of Hoss Avenue.
Is that the alley that, that runs behind Hoss?
No, it's, it runs, uh, the house is face thirty-one.
Right.
And you have House Avenue that runs next to St. John Paul, as you're going back to the pool, there's an alley that runs down there that we added into that.
If you're going up thirty-one towards speed, Hoss is right here on the corner.
Hoss is across street.
No, and he's talking in Hoss, Kevin.
He's talking about that building.
Further down.
Further down.
Um, it's between.
Between Cloud Nine and.
Between, where Cloud Nine sits.
On that side of thirty-one.
Behind Cloud Nine.
Okay, well, what, what about the alley on the other side, if you go up thirty-one, it's on the right, you have.
It's Novel Drive, that's, that was part of the CCMG package that is on, that was approved earlier last year, late last year.
Is that going to be paved?
Yes.
I was, I, I almost had to call, I, I almost had to call the police to come and escort me out of it, because they were like, why are they going to pave this? So it's going to get paved, I can report to them, it's going to get paved.
There's a list on the thing, it shows every street that we have.
Yeah, but I have to go enjoy my kids.
It was on this, I think it was on the flyer, the, the mailer that Charlie.
Yeah, there's a, there's this thing on the site under news that talks about all the roads we've paved, uh, Circle Drive, Celeste, and some other alleys not on there.
The whole length of these alleys from start to finish are going to be paved?
Not every alley, but we're paving quite a few this year.
No, I'm saying the length of the areas that are select are going to be paved.
Correct.
Now, those that have private property, that have drives and stuff that run off of these alleys, that's their responsibility, right? We're just doing the alley.
We do the alley and typically a little bit of an approach.
Like a little apron type thing? I don't know what more you can ask for.
So Charlie, we go back to that, uh, cause, you know, there's a lot of alleys in my district. You had said one time before, is this the one where we're going to have speed limit signs and stop signs at the end of the alleys? That's not going to happen.
We can, um, they're not, alleys are not typically signalized at the intersections.
I didn't know if you had said some of the, uh, financing was tied to that, uh, through that, it had to have, uh, speed limit signs and stop signs, that had to be named?
Um, they had to be named to get added into our inventory, a good portion of those got kicked out.
Okay, so we don't have to have the stop signs or the, okay.
We should name the alleys. We tried to name the alley, there should be, uh, historical people from around town, we've actually done that. And that was a whole different getting paid, which they, they didn't name, so once people were able to name them, then they were turned into the CCMG and like you said, a lot of them got kicked back out.
They get kicked back out, because NDOT does not accept alleys in its inventories, so the ones that did accept, we were paid with three right now.
And some alleys are privately owned too, so we're not going to have to pave any private.
I don't have many alleys in Fisher Creek, Charlie.
Uh, you don't have any alleys in your.
There's no alleys in Cover Bridge, but if there was, I'd name it Mobley Way.
Um, so they're over on Millview right now, working through concretes, um, gutters and storm drains currently. Uh, we went through last week, uh, two weeks ago, we went through and did a walkthrough on every street that has concrete work. Uh, did walk-offs on it, came back, did another walkthrough over here, we did a secondary walkthrough here last week, uh, on stuff. As far as the flooding goes, I mean, you mentioned flooding earlier, nothing really out of the ordinary and unexpected. Um, I put together a fairly lengthy social media post prior to the storm events to try to explain why we flood. A good portion of the reasons why we flood is because we're in floodplain. Um, we have two watersheds that combine down here on thirty-one, um, this is, that's, that's where it's at, uh, we can try to mitigate it some, uh, through stormwater detention and retention upstream. Um, but there's always a bigger storm, so this was, uh, obviously historic rainfall event. Uh, other than flash flooding that we had, again, I don't think there's really anything unexpected. Uh, I did see Allentown, a creek up here, uh, on Allentown, by the way, it started coming up out of its banks and I had not seen that before, um, what's that? Yeah, so that was.
Mark Wyberg, he's a little dramatic, but he, he claimed this is a top ten storm event of all time.
I would probably agree with that, just in amount of rainfall over the short period of time that we had. Um, but again, once, once the flashing portion, uh, got through here, we really didn't have much issue, residual issue. Uh, the water levels kind of came up, they went down, they come up fast, we go down fast, so, uh, so like I said, why don't we do some cleanup and some different things through there, there wasn't anything that we had as far as storm damage, as far as, I think we have one tree down blocking the road at one point. Uh, but other than that, we really have any residual issues. Uh, did have some conversation, talking, well, let's go back to stormwater, so talking about stormwater. And detention and retention, I've been in conversations with county commissioners about adopting similar stormwater ordinance to us. If you all recall, you all did a stormwater ordinance and, uh, technical standard that increased mandatory detention on projects over certain sizes. Um, the goal of that was to detain water upstream to help downstream impacts. Um, City of Jerisville has basically an identical stormwater ordinance and technical standard. They also have some mandatory reductions, although they're not as high as ours is. Um, attended a meeting last week at the county, uh, the county commissioners are basically going to adopt a very similar or the same ordinance that us in the City of Jerisville has, which is going to basically be the start of the first, what I'm going to quote, air quote, county-wide stormwater standard as far as detention or retention, uh, which will be good for us, because some of a lot of stormwater that we have that runs through town comes from county, uh, comes from the county and county projects. So that'll be positive. Speaking of traffic, I had a conversation, we're looping together St. John Paul and Silvick School Corporation, uh, Transportation Director and working with those two entities on mitigating the flood of cars onto thirty-one when the project starts next year on thirty-one. If you drove through town last week, um, the gas company is out there doing work right now, because the relocations have started on the thirty-one project. Um, working with some of the utilities now about just blatantly closing town Selersburg roadways. We don't permit thirty-one because it's an NDOT road, we do permit road closures on town roadways. Um, I was driving through town, all of a sudden Utica Street was closed. They communicated with me the day before, it was not going to be closed, it was going to be flagged with one lane open and they closed the whole thing, so that, uh, made my head explode and started some conversation, so, um, trying to get out in front of this, so we don't have these, um, closures unnoticed and unmarked and no detours or anything, uh, as we go through this utility relocation phase of this project, yes.
So when these contractors, when they're doing work for NDOT on thirty-one, do just exactly what you said. There's not a, okay, like where I'm from professionally, with the Board of Public Works, they come in and say, hey, we want to close this road or want to flag it or want to restrict it, we, we don't have a setup for that.
We do.
What is the pro, do they, do they understand that process?
Yes, so these are not the contractors for NDOT, these are actual utilities. So they are not under NDOT contract or the contractor for NDOT's contract, these are utility relocations that basically, just like we are going to have to do utility relocations. We submit a plan of work into NDOT, it's on us to move, to, to move the utilities. Um, we do have a road closure permit, it is a free, it is a no-fee permit. Uh, basic of the process is, it comes in to my office for approval, um, depending on what it is and how, um, excessive it is, it can get kicked over to the, the TRC, uh, Technical Review Committee for that. Um, we don't typically permit or anything, just flagging or lane restrictions as long as the road remains open. But if you are going to close a road, there is supposed to be a ten-day notice posted, uh, a noticed, uh, closing notice. Within three days of the closure, they're supposed to contact Central Dispatch to let them know that the road is going to be closed for emergency response. Uh, they had to provide me with a traffic plan that shows the posted detour. So the work was. So the work with Silver Creek and Saint John Paul to hopefully realign some of the pickup and drop-off situations. So they're starting to think through that and want to get it on their radar before that. Also, I had a meeting last week with the town of Clarksville, uh, and the fire department contractor. The fire department that's being constructed over there for Tri-Township is splitting jurisdictions. It's a little bit of an oddity. The building is in Clarksville, but their stormwater is in the town. So it's brought up some interesting permitting challenges that we typically don't see. Um, so we're working through that with them. Easter egg hunt was this weekend, everything went really well. Uh, with Easter Bunny came through, hit twenty-five eggs, twenty-three or twenty-one of them, twenty-two of them were claimed the morning of. The other three eggs were found because the eggs are gone and nobody's come to claim them. So if you found the egg, uh, one of the three eggs that remained out there, come to the billing officer in normal business hours and they'll have your prize. Um, Shakespeare in the Park was also this weekend, it was attended by about seven people, it was beautiful day. Um, Hamlet in the Park, I almost called the police chief because we had sword fighting in the park, people getting stabbed. So Shakespeare, it was good. Uh, so again, that was, uh, provided for through a grant, uh, with the Kentucky Shake, Kentucky Shakespeare Festival. Um, Fund for the Arts and the Southern Indiana Community Foundation.
Charles?
Yes, sir.
Never say that in a public meeting again. If people are stabbing each other at a town-sponsored event.
It was Macbeth.
Just, just for your own.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, are you done?
I'm done now.
He's a busy guy.
Let's talk about potholes. Um, if you have a pothole, report it to the Pothole Patrol, it is on the website. Um, I would ask people, please read the code before you submit a pothole. If you submit a pothole that is not the town of Sellersburg roadway, we will forward it for you, um, to NDOT or the county. I've talked to the county, I've talked to the county engineer last week, early last week, uh, via email. I had a meeting with him late last week in person and submitted some stuff into them today for the county section of three eleven through town, which is, uh, in need of quite a few repairs. Uh, from a pothole perspective, as well as I submitted quite a few things into NDOT over the last three or four days, uh, for the thirty-one section and over to four oh three. So again, um, it's out there. If it's a town issue, we will address it immediately. Um, we are trying to work with these other entities within their jurisdiction to address their roadways. Um, I anticipate three eleven being addressed by the end of the week is what it was communicated to me.
Good. All right. Anybody have anything? Charlie tonight? Lucky you. Okay, all right. Uh, we have Assistant Chief Matt Adams with us tonight. Matt, you have anything? Thank you. Uh, okay, Aaron from JTL, um, has some updates, uh, as always, uh, we have a nice, uh, lengthy sheet here.
What was, sir, what was your name again?
Aaron.
Aaron. Are you new?
Celebrated my twenty-fifth.
Year?
Year last week.
Wow, congratulations.
Thank you.
Anybody that works with Mike Harris for twenty-five years deserves a medal.
That's what I keep telling him. It's on the record.
It is.
Painted out the, the report there in front of you. Um, just to run through quickly, um, underwater, the Sunflower Valley Water Project, um, the contract amendment's been submitted to the IFA, just waiting on their approval. Second project there, the LCRR Phase Three, um, the field inspections have started. The speed area has been completed. Uh, we expect the downtown area to be, um, completed, uh, next week and then Preston will be the next area. Still on target, I think, for the mid-June completion of all the, uh, inventory. Um, Charlie mentioned the, uh, US thirty-one project, uh, for the water and sewer. Um, we've received our approval for the work plan. And so we're working on a schedule to get, uh, the relocation, the town's relocations, um, out to bid, uh, sometime this month. Looking at the, the twenty-first there to, to get them out. As far as the Sellersburg Drinking Water PER and AMP, uh, it has been, it was submitted to the IFA on April first, so, um, that one got, uh, got turned in. The State Road sixty utility relocation for wastewater, uh, NTP was received. Uh, the pre-con meeting is set up for April twenty-second, so that one's coming up. Um, Ivy Tech pump station, all the permanent permitting's been approved and some of the, the trees, the large trees were taken down to, to make sure we were in compliance with the departments. Last couple of projects there on the road, Charlie's mentioned the, the CCMG, so, uh, the key provided to update on those. Any questions?
Yes, can you explain to us what the, under the drinking water PER and AMP, just explain what that is? Please.
I'll have to, to get back with you, but I apologize, I'm not sure.
Charlie, you know. It is a preliminary engineering, engineering report, uh, for a couple of water projects and looking for water main replacements, a water tower, uh, and a raw water line replacements.
Okay.
Our raw water line expansion from the well field to the, um, water plants. And then I believe, where it was Cooper Door, Cooper Dell, Preston water main replacements. And then a potential, um, storage expansion project for additional water power somewhere.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Aaron.
Yep.
You wanna go, sir?
Yeah, you want to get Jake, does Jake go in first?
No, no, I think he's good.
Yeah, real quick, uh, happy Easter to everyone this Sunday. Uh, I wanna thank the residents of the Greenwood Road area, uh, for all the construction that's been going on in our area. And the, uh, workers told me that, uh, that actually people were bringing them out bottled water and actually made them some cookies, so.
Good, good people down there.
Good people down there. So, uh, all right, uh, on Highway sixty where the Wawa is going in, the, the state has the sensors placed in Highway sixty so far. So I guess we're getting pretty close to having a, a working stoplight there. And then trash pickup for District Four will be Thursday instead of Friday because the town is closed for business on Friday for Good Friday. So they need such a trash out Wednesday night to be picked up Thursday. And then I will yield the rest of my time to, uh, Council of Mid-Fourth.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I'm talking about the Wawa.
Yes.
You know, when it was, I, I had, I was, I was reached out by someone this morning to ask them if something was going on. I told them, I said, hey, I was over Preston Highway, or Gene Snyder, and I know we're about already finished that one up, so I was, was thinking this crew was going.
What was explained to me was they started on the one in Clarksville, they didn't have all the permitting they needed. So they sent a crew out to go ahead and start this one. And then when they received the permits that they needed in Clarksville, they went back to finish that one up first. And when they get to a certain point in that, when they'll come out and finish ours. That was what was explained to me, whether that be.
Contractor also prepared the, uh, the burned down, uh, gas station facility too.
It's still standing, isn't it? I, oh, is it, is it down? I hadn't noticed. Okay, yeah. Yeah, I know he applied for a permit, but I didn't know when it got to work. I was out of town all weekend, so, yeah.
Do you wanna, you wanna, the yield, everybody else's time, so you can.
I'll go last.
Matt, you wanna go? Randy?
I was kinda wanting to go last, so Scott couldn't say anything.
I'll, 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 I have respect for my elders. If you want to go last, I'll go last. Can I go now?
Yeah, if you want to. I can go next, okay.
Oh, no, you always go last. Uh, a couple of things, Charlie, I think you covered the flooding. Uh, I was very, very happy to, to hear. I, I heard a handful of people had some sump pump issues. Um, it's probably a good time, if you've made it through this without any issues, probably a good time while you have some downtime to get your sump pump looked at. There's a lot of companies out there that'll do that for you. I don't know of anyone in particular, but I, I did hear of a handful of people having problems with their sump pumps, so. Might wanna do that, consider the PSA. You covered the potholes. Um, I hit one on sixty the other day that literally, I thought I was gonna have to go to Dennis. Is it, is it at the water Mulan? Yes. So there's a road collapse happening there that NDOT is aware of and they've got them marked off. Right, so. So, people know, that's not our road. Correct. That is the state of Indiana's road. And it's collapsing. It is. There's another section further down towards Saint Joe West that is collapsed. The one side they came and fixed, now the other side is collapsing. You know, it, it's got this, when you make a right off of Saint Joe East and you're going towards Saint Joe West, half of the lane, you can see it, is, is crumbling, like.
Sucking in.
Yeah. I don't know about that one. I know the one by the water's Mulan, there's a pipe across the diagonal into roadway that separated and with the amount of water that went through there and got up in there and washed out. Well, they may wanna go out there sooner rather than later if they're not aware of it because, uh, that's gonna be a major problem for them. Just, but it's not our road. However, the problem that I have is, is that our residents travel that road. That's the problem that I have. Same with Bennettsville. It's the potholes, I mean, yeah, the county's gotta do better. In, in my opinion, I don't know how you guys feel, let's just, just give us the road, because I know we'll maintain it, but. Uh, I, I, I don't have any stripes on, on Perry Crossing. When I first ran, I, I had a little elderly lady tell me, I'm not gonna name her name, that she has a hard time driving at night, she doesn't like to get out a whole lot because you can't see when it gets dark and then it starts raining and she really can't see, she gets nervous and the county, they have to help us. Now, I know you came in and did some stuff, but, I mean, they gotta do better. County is repaving their portion of Perry Crossing from the town board to Highway sixty. Some earlier also, our portion of Perry Crossing. So years of me complaining, did that have any effect on us? No? I'm gonna take credit for it anyway. Um, Chief.
I knew you would.
I know, I'm going to, I'm going to. Chief, so recently, um, and I'm not asking to get any specifics, one of our cars got involved in an accident. Does the Sellersburg Police Department investigate its own traffic accidents, minor or major? You call another agency to come and do the accident report for you and do the investigation for you.
Yes.
And in the event that any of our employees are found at any type of fault, um, I'm assuming that they have to take a drug test po, uh, is that in your policies, uh? Drug and alcohol for any, any, uh, even offender, Ben, right? If they're on duty. We're off. Yes, thank you. And in the event that, whether it was egregious or just minor, hey, people are human, cops are humans, I'm, I, I do dumb stuff all the time. I, I admit it, I'm a human being, I'm not perfect. I'm assuming that be, between you and the chief, that, uh, said person that was involved in the accident would receive some type of disciplinary, anything from a written warning to time off or whatever.
Yes.
Base off. So it's not just some free pass, oh, well, I got in an accident, the town, okay. I just wanted to verify that, okay? So, so you're not investigating? The, I'm, I assume, uh, ISP comes and does that for you?
So.
Or the county?
The shared department's investigating this. And they called me on my way to see and asked who they were running down. Responding and responsible for that area.
See, I know that. But the folks needed it.
Yeah, we have never, in my twenty-seven years.
And they're subject to drug tests. They're subject to, uh, uh, alcohol tests, they're subject to all these extra things. And on top of that, if they're at fault, there's a potential it'll be written up, suspended, sent to remedial training. So it's not just like, oh, well, right? Okay, it's good to, good to know. Thank you. Um, I'd mentioned this before, uh, and I was pretty, I was pretty adamant about it in, uh, with Tri-Township. And I think Chief does a great job over there, but we're all aware of the, the Jeffersonville, the Fire Taxing District and what, what impact that's going to have on other localities. Um, obviously I work in Jeffersonville full-time, so I, I'm, I'm mixed, but I know it's gonna have, if it goes through, I don't think it's in DLGF right now. Um, if that was to go through, each of the other municipalities would suffer some type of impact, uh, financially. And i- initially I was, hey, you know, we're in a situation where all I care about is the residents of this town and getting EMS and getting the things that they need, first-class professional, and that is a mirror. And I had lobbied early, I know it's a bad word to say, but I'll say it anyway, I lobbied early that, hey, we should contribute to an ambulance, we should contribute to this because the town needs that. And now I'm sitting here that I, I wanna retract some of that to say, I wanna see how all the dust settles. I still think we should help Tri-Township. Maybe, you know, I didn't know a stretcher costs seventy thousand dollars. Did you know that? A stretcher, the, the ones that they want are seventy thousand dollars. An ambulance is four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, eighteen months to order and receive. So I think we bear some responsibility in making sure our, but again, when we talk about taxes, that is a taxing entity. Tri-Township Fire has its own, uh, taxing, uh, and, and they raise theirs, so they bear some responsibilities in managing their budget, managing their projects and the things they have going on, because I don't want people feeling like they're double taxed. Uh, I support the chief and I think there's an avenue there, but I would probably, I know I pushed several months ago for, for that. So I'm probably gonna take a step back and see how all the dust settles before we move further with, you know, do we have cash on hand to do something or do we, do we have something that we can help make things better for him? I still support that. I just wanna see where all the dust settles. So if you guys were feeling any type of, uh, pressure from me on the back burner or like I was nagging you about, hey, let's do something, I, I, I would just wanna take a pause on that, in my opinion. I'm only one of five, but if you guys wanna move forward or something, that's, that's your business, but I wanna see where, where the chips fall. Before we do anything, that's my opinion. I'm excited for Wawas, I'm excited for Easter. Uh, be safe out there. Um, you know, I know there's, uh, some stuff going on with the schools, obviously. Um, you know, and I, whether you're a yes or a no, for or against, just, just be kind, just, just, there, there's no reason to, to, uh, take it to a personal level to where it just begins to divide the, the town. And everyone has different reasonings for voting yes, no. Some people unfortunately won't even go out and vote, is the sad part. Um, but I, I appreciate the public coming in tonight, asking questions, that's what we're here for. Michelle, how much money do I make a month? What do I get paid? What is that a month? So for the month of March, because I had someone tell me that it's my responsibility at the very minimum to be available at all times, which I am. Have you ever called me chief and not got ahold of me? Jake? I might miss your call, but I call you back. Because I always get, I get scared with you because you're an attorney and I know I'm not trying to get billed. But for the month of March, I did two council meetings, another, uh, meeting, uh, here, which was the, uh, plan. Uh, I spent two and a half hours respond, I tracked all this because this is the kinda guy that I am. Things like this fuel me, Von, you know, I told you that. But I want it on the record. So I spent the month of March, two hours and twenty-five minutes responding to emails. Uh, I returned ten voicemail calls that I spent four hours and thirty-seven minutes on the phone, believe it or not, with these, with these folks. In other calls where I didn't respond to voicemails and people just called me randomly through the day, for the month was a total of eleven hours and thirty-seven more minutes. Uh, I did three hours in person and then for my research, because I don't come in here all willy-nilly, just picking up papers, thinking I'm just gonna sit up here and talk. So I do my research and communication and I wanna make a great attorney one of these days. And, uh, I spent another four and a half hours doing research, reading emails, looking at different things. That's fifty hours of, of time that I am available for. If I just do simple math, that's twenty bucks an hour. I mean, and I know that I probably missed these guys, Brad does a lot more than I do, Terry makes more meetings, they're retired, he's retired, Randy's retired, they got nothing but time on their hands. Um, you know, you got a full-time profession, he's running a business, he loves this town, I mean, everyone's up here. So when I hear things like we're, we're selling the town out or we're corrupt or we're this, that, I take offense to that. And I always will until the last day that I sit and they say, hey, the next one person wants to come in here and sit on it, they can do what they want. But when they attack, you know, because they don't like what they hear, I can agree to disagree, you know? But I'm not gonna like you any less. I'm not gonna call you names. I'm not going to call you names. I'm not going to make accusations. And especially in this day and age, and I'm sorry if someone, anybody takes this the wrong way, but the word corrupt to me rings a different type of bell. If anybody's, if anybody's watched the news, no, I'm just saying in general. No, no, I'm looking at, I'm actually looking at Michelle because she's wanting to go home. So I take that a little, because I know these are, these are good men up here that care about this town. They've been in this town a lot longer than I have. I'm a transplant, I'm from Philadelphia. So I take offense to that. Charlie works, you know, you won't find a better, I didn't want to hire a town manager to sit behind a desk. Sellersburg don't need a town manager that's going to sit behind a desk and just push papers around and go home at four o'clock or three o'clock or go golfing at noon and not ever come back. The guy will go out and dig, dig a ditch, he'll drive a snowplow, he'll pick up a shovel. I've never not called him and he's answered the phone with anything. And he has to listen to me vent and that's tough. So when I respond, I just respond, just the only way that I know how to. But I love the fact that you come in here and ask questions and I want to solve problems for as best that I can. There's sometimes I can't or we can't. But the more people come in with some civility and decorum, just like we had conversation tonight, I think the more will get accomplished, in my opinion. Whether you, you're a Republican, I don't believe in all that in the local level, I just don't. Democrat, I've sat next to Terry for six years. He's not put hands on me yet. So I just think that's what we need, okay? And regardless of other things going on in town, I think everyone here wants what's best for the town of Sellersburg. I don't think there's any personal agendas. I think every one of us tomorrow can walk away from, from this spot and not have to feel like we need to be reelected again. I'm not, I'm not running again. You guys know that. Some people tell me that I should, but I'm not because that's, I hold true to what I'm saying. So other than that, have a great Easter, great holidays if you don't celebrate the Easter. Have a great weekend, be safe. Good luck to all the baseball teams, softball teams out there because that's my, that's my sport, so. Randy, go ahead. I'm sorry, I forgot you were going last this time.
Hey, that's all right. Listen, I just have to kind of echo off what Scott said about being kind with, with the election coming up. I don't think, I've seen one post and I'm the worst person with watching social media. I do not get involved. I am very good when people call me or text me or make personal contact. As Scott said, you know, I'm pretty old, as, as he said earlier, kind of, you know, I'm the oldest guy up here. So, you know, he, he makes that known publicly and privately all the time. But at any rate, that's, that's kind of the way I respond. I do things more on a personal level. And as for the hours that he, he had indicated, you know, I didn't really keep track of mine, but I remember being during the flooding, I was in several residences having sewer problems and water problems. And, you know, it was just, you know, sometimes you need somebody to hear, to hear you. I got, just publicly, I got my assessment today. I need someone to hear me because I don't like it. And, you know, we're up here, we have to spend tax dollars, we have to do it wisely. And, you know, I, I know the school, they have a, an issue. We had an issue when we acquired the Sellersburg Elementary and some of the constituents here had a great idea to make it a town hall and preserve the history, but it come down to, it come down to dollars. And when you, you know, you, it all falls back on the people paying the tax money. If it, you know, if we had somebody that just could write a check for it and had a bigger tax base, hey, we'd have a town hall down there. They'd be building it after May twenty-sixth or after May of twenty twenty-six. But at any rate, I'm on the street in sanitation, the street stuff. I've called in several holes in the road in different places and I call, I work with our, I'm the street liaison. I work in sanitation, come from a trucking background and sales. In the last six years, with the town manager and the group of people that we have, he put together the best road crew, snow removal, these guys are, they're warriors. We got some people that they really go to work and do, we do everything perfectly. We don't, but these guys, as, as the sheriff says, they show up and they go to work and, you know, we do that. So, you know, I give them accolades. I'm on the parks board. You know, we, we, we suffer with, with parks. We don't have lots of areas, we don't have dollars for it. But, you know, we're, we're trying to keep the pool open. Everybody says, well, the pool loses money. It does, it loses money, but there are still kids that need that. They need that up there. So talked to the town manager here and we sent our guy up there who's not a, an expert, but we, we kind of, we kind of got the thing going in a way that really, with our in-house people, saved us a gob of money. So, you know, I'm excited about that. But, you know, outside of, you know, as, as councilman McBoy said, I don't think anybody's up here to get rich. You know, it's, it's not about that. You're, you're not making gobs of money sitting here. It's, I care about the town. I've been here since the early seventies and that was the nineteen seventies, not eighteen seventies, thank you. Yeah, it's his, yeah, when, yeah, but anyway, the rock, the streets were all gravel and everything, Scott. But thanks for your, your observation tonight, councilman McBoy. And it's always, always a pleasure to see you here and just always good to see your face. No, I'm a proud citizen of Sellersburg. I love it here. People ask me if I'm ever going to, you know, like run for the next election. I said, you know, when the next election comes, that's when I'll make a decision. So at any rate, back to you there, Brad.
Okay, all right. Again, I appreciate every one of y'all talking. Like I said, there's no need to repeat the words. I do hope that you will make more than twenty dollars an hour because if you are a good attorney, you will make two and a quarter at least, maybe, okay? Yeah, all right. Personally appreciate that. You know, again, just like you did say, I will applaud this, that, you know, our town employees, you know, our police department, Charlie. Most importantly, everyone got out, you know, and tried to protect our roads, you know, from the flooding areas. We had a few people that disrespected that. And, you know, I'm a little disappointed when you find out who some of those people are because they feel that they are above the law. And I hope that everyone understands this for the safety of everyone, you know, it's not, we're not trying to prevent you from getting to point A to point B. So again, I think that folks out there from the cleanup crew, getting the trees down so quickly for us to do this sewer project, you know, it's, it's a necessity. I appreciate everyone from Baker Tilly to Go Zeller Brown, Todd, JTL Prime, Mac Construction, and Wheatley Group, all of getting together and getting this done and this project done so we can do this realistically and reliable, because, I mean, we could have been in this position. Randy, you know, as much as I'll be the first one to say that I was the guy that would have loved to seen that grade school. Went to school there, we, three of us went to school, my parents went to school there, a lot of people in our community went to school there. But we probably would have had to back out because, you know, of this sewer project and some other projects that we're looking to do. So I'm glad that we have a great, you know, RDC board to be able to do what's best, you know, for preserving a piece of, of tradition and a historic building here in town. I hope that we can get together and try to maybe do something a little bit on this food truck thing. I mean, it's something that our town really, you know, Charlie, I don't know if you're going to do the, you go do the thing on American Way.
Parks is talking about it, but they're actually talking about hosting down here at the park.
All right, okay. And I do want to thank Scott Griffin and his crew for, like I said, going above and beyond and finding, you know, some of our issues we had at the pool. So, you know, kids and families can enjoy, you know, our pool facility. So again, I appreciate everybody for what they do. You know, enjoy your Easter holiday, weekend with your family. Tell them you love them, tell them you care about them and know why you're, know why you're, why you're there for, you know, this coming Sunday for certain. So again, that's all I have to show. Do you have anything? All right, with that, I just ask for a adjournment.
So much.
Motion by Matt, second by Scott. On prayer, say aye. Seven forty-one.